One council meeting to order. The Honorable Allison Love will give us invocation and pledge allegiance.
Dear Lord, we are meeting today to conduct matters of business. Guide our hearts and our minds in your Spirit of fairness, right thought, and speech. impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll have the oath of office for newly appointed boards and commissions if the following people would come forward to be sworn in. Jim Jones for Catawba Regional Workforce Investment Board, Reese Hagner and Alan Chatham, Jason Broadwater and Teresa Curtis for Catawba Regional Workforce Investment Board, Sam Hall, Rock Hill CBB District 3, Philip Hannahcheck for H-Tax District 1, and Antonio Mickel for York County Planning Commission District 4. At this time, under appearances, we have the annual audit presentation by Green Finney.
Good evening. We appreciate the opportunity to be here. I want to, I want to start out a little different than we normally do because you actually have a pretty final draft in front of you instead of the final financial statements. You know, normally, we, we come probably the end of December, but we have this thing this year called the CARES Act. And the, the county received a, or really spent a pretty significant amount of money as of the year we audited, June 30th, 2020. And so, we had to wait until the federal government issued some guidelines and all in terms of what they wanted us to do. And they finally issued those guidelines on December 23rd. So needless to say, we got busy in January with Kevin and Erin and the staff. We're just about, I think we, we wrapped up probably the last of that work today. So we should be able to, to issue the financial statements and get all that completed before the end of the month. So, but as far as the audit's concerned, we're, we're good with the numbers and, and all that. So that's why we wanted to go ahead and come and present the results of the audit to you. So Karen, are you the? Thank you. There we go. Thank you. All right. So what I want to do is basically two things is, one, spend just a couple of minutes talking about the audit itself and the results of the audit as we wrap it up. And then secondly, I want to spend a little bit of time talking about the financial condition of the county as of last June 30th. So I like to start out and remind you that in addition to the financial statements, which are the, the county's responsibility, the information that's in there, what we don't always think about all the time is what's behind the numbers and the amounts and all in the financial statements, and that's the internal controls and the processes and procedures. And so I'd just like to remind you as a, as a county council about how important that part of all this is, that what makes this accurate and complete and reliable is, is what's behind the scenes with those internal controls. There is no perfect system. There's always risks because of that. And so, we, we always just like to remind management and council that just that risk assessment and just asking questions is a, is a good practice to get in the habit of. So then what you ask us to do is to perform our audit procedures. And the end result of our audit procedures is the opinion that we issue. And a couple of things I like to remind you about that is when it comes to an audit is, number one, what we're issuing is an opinion that's, that provides reasonable assurance, not absolute, because we're not looking at all the transactions. And we're, the opinion says that everything's materially correct, and that kind of goes along with that reasonable assurance. Having said that, the county is going to receive an unmodified opinion for the audit for the year ended June 30th, 2020. I know that doesn't mean a whole lot to anybody, but that's the best opinion you can receive, is that unmodified opinion. So it really doesn't matter who you are. And it's probably a good place for me to stop and say, thank you, Kevin, and especially thank you, Erin. We, I can probably count on, probably doesn't even take two hands to count the number of clients that we have that actually prepare their own financial statements instead of counting on us to prepare them. And York County is one of those. And so that's because of these guys over here and the great job that we do. So we appreciate that very much. All right. With that, let me talk a little bit about where you are. And as, as you know, we like to start out talking about general fund, fund balance, because if there's one measurement that anybody wants to look at to say, hey, how's the county doing? That's what it's going to be, is that general fund, fund balance, especially the unassigned fund balance. So you can see in total for your general fund, your fund balance increased about 11.6 million, is sitting at about 78 million. Some of that's non-spendable, related to some assets you have for sale, some of it's restricted, some of it is committed for very specific purposes. So what you're left with, with your unassigned fund balance is about 37 and a half million dollars. That represents a little, a little over 30% of your budgeted expenditures for the year we're in now. And we, we like to look at it on a percentage basis because that, that allows us to compare apples to apples. And as you probably know, you've established a, a minimum threshold of, of 25%. So you're, you're above that threshold that you have. And I like to remind you, as we talk about fund balance, especially when you've got a healthy fund balance like you do, I like to remind you about why, from our perspective, that is so important. And I'll just mention a couple of things, but one is that remember when we measure this fund balance as of June 30th, that the county's going to have to go about five to six months before you're going to receive any more significant property tax revenue. So that fund balance is what helps carry you through until December comes and you start seeing some more property tax revenue. Obviously, it's a very appropriate time to be talking about what if there's emergencies or unanticipated events and, and those kinds of things. Particularly with this, you know, obviously, there, there have been some sources of revenue that you always can't count on, and so having that fund balance in case you need it is great. And I want to highlight the last bullet as well, only because we've had a couple of clients who have started doing this recently. And I just want to remind the board, the council especially, about how important it is to try to stay away from using fund balance for recurring expenditures. If you start down that path, it just becomes very, very difficult to stop and, and put the brakes on that. How did we get there this year? Your general fund revenues were about 120 million, kind of giving you the, the big picture highlights there. That's about a $6 million increase from where you, what you had last year. That was all increases in property taxes. And you're actually a little over 7 and 1/2 million better than what you budgeted. And there's a lot of details on that. If you want to know more about the details, there's a lot of details in the financial statements about what makes that up compared to your budget. And then on the expenditure side, about 101 million, about a $2 million increase from the prior year, and you're about 9 million under budget. Obviously, with COVID and some of the things that happened with all that, that's worse, that's pretty common in terms of what we're seeing, a little, expenditures being a little more under budget than what we usually see. Again, we kind of give you the general departments that that's in, but there's a lot of detail in your financial statements about that as well. In total, I'd like to just put all of your governmental funds together, and if you look at all your governmental funds together and kind of get an idea about what the county looks like, your revenues and, and other financing sources are about 227 million. Your expenditures are a little more, but that's because you've got some particular funds, capital projects, pennies three, pennies four, that you've had some pretty healthy fund balances, and your spending goes down now. Your enterprise funds, you can see both water and sewer. Your increase in your net assets was pretty comparable to what you had in the prior year. And your solid waste disposal, your increase in your net position there was a little under 2 million compared to about 300,000 in the prior year, and that's primarily just due to some, some better sales and service charges. Have got a couple of slides just to remind you, there's a couple of really big numbers in your financial statements. One of them is this pension liability that you'll see that's about 111 million dollars. And what I like to remind you is just a couple of things with that is, that's not a liability that you suddenly have to figure out how you're going to come up with the money to satisfy that. That's actually a liability that exists at the state retirement system. And what that 111 million represents is York County's portion of the total unfunded liability that exists at the state retirement system. So this, I think, I think right now it's around 25 billion in total. And so that 111 million is York County's portion. Your responsibility is nothing more than to keep doing what you are doing and have always done, and that is make your payments to the retirement system, both the employee and employer portion of that. And you're really doing everything that you should be doing. Few years ago, the retirement system instituted some annual increases in the rates, initially both for employee and employer, now it's just employer. They did put the brakes on that for 2021 because of COVIDs, but you can expect that to continue in future years. And it's basically the same story with, a little bit different, but it's the county's OPEB plan, and so you're, we're required to show what your net liability is related to that OPEB plan, and it's about 37 million. Again, no impact on the general fund and your other governmental funds with that. Just to give you the highlights kind of of your capital assets, and then another slide on your debt, you can see what you've got there, about 423 million dollars, about 54 million in additions this year. And you've got commitments, as of June 30th, you had commitments of about 48 million dollars primarily related to your, your road projects. And then on the debt side of things, you've got about 140 million. You can see what makes that, that up. Your principal interest payments were about 23 million, going to be a little bit less than that. And then, you know, the, the county has the ability to issue debt up to 8% of your, your assessed value. Your capacity with that is the piece of it that has not, that's still available is about 72 million on that. Just to make you aware, there are a couple of future governmental accounting standards that are coming up, and obviously Kevin and Erin and, and our team will, will work on making sure that gets implemented appropriately. And as I mentioned earlier, this was a unique year when it comes to the compliance work that we do regarding your federal programs. Typically, we just look at the Title IV Child Support Services Program, but this year, because of the relief funds, we also looked at, at that as well. We do not have any findings related to our single audit work at the county. The county's doing a good job with its compliance. You will also be getting, when we issue the final financial statements, you will also be getting the management letter, which is basically some required communication from us to you regarding our audit. There really isn't anything to talk of there, and we do not have, you know, as we, as we perform our audit, there's always things that we might see to help the county improve what, what, how they're doing. But we didn't have anything that rose to the level that needed to be included in writing as part of the management letter. So the county's doing a good job on that end as well. And that's really it. So to kind of summarize, you, county's going to receive that unmodified opinion, that best opinion that you can receive. Your financial condition is very good at June 30th, 2020. I, I do want to mention too, that every year, the county applies to the, the GFOA is the Government Finance Officers Association, and they have a program called the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. You can submit your, your financial statements, your CAFR, and they will review it. And if you, if you meet all the requirements and, and expectations they have, you receive a certificate. And the county has received that certificate for several years now, and did last year for the 2019 year. And that's not, that's not a, that's not a real common thing in South Carolina, I will say. There are not a lot of entities that actually receive that in the state. So that is something to be proud of as a county, that you receive that certificate. And then just a reminder, just as you continue to work on future budgets, that those rates at the state level, both with the health and with the, with the retirement piece are going to continue to go up. So that's just something to keep in mind. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Roddy? Of course. I'll look straight at you.
Like you said, not too many people come in at that level, so I think that's a true testament to our staff now, our financial director, Kevin, and certainly David. And I know, I would like for you to kind of give a quick crash course on committed funds, restricted and unrestricted, for Joe Public who's just sitting at home listening, because I certainly know what they mean. And also, while you're scrolling back, what could the general public go to a financial audit statement such as this and look for that says, my city's doing good, my county's doing good? Or what can they look for that says, hmm, this is not too good? You know, what are some of those low hanging fruit that they can just grab to say, we're in good shape or we're in bad shape?
Okay. Good question. So let's, let's deal with what's the non-spendable, restricted, committed, and that when it comes to fund balance. So a non-spendable fund balance represents items that have, the, the funds have already been used, but there's still an asset that's sitting there that the county has. So a good example is inventory, right? So we, we use the funds, we go buy inventory, but that inventory is still sitting on our books as an asset until we use it. So if we have part of our fund balance is, is committed, is in inventory, then it can't be spent again because it's already been spent. So that's what the non-spendable piece is. The restricted fund balance is the piece of fund balance that there is a, an external, so outside of the county, there is a contractual or legal commitment to spending those funds in a very specific way. And so that could be state funds, it could be federal funds, but it's something outside of the county itself that says, you've got to, you can only use these funds in this way. And then the committed funds actually represent decisions that are made by the county in terms of taking funds and saying, we're only going to use those funds in this very specific way. So that's at the county level. And those funds, if they're committed, that decision was made before the end of the fiscal year, so in this case, before June 30th, 2020. If there were funds that were committed that way after year end, they would be called what's, what's called a signed fund balance, which the, the county did not have any assigned funds. So you take your total fund balance, you subtract all those funds, and what's left is the unassigned. And the unassigned is what is available for general future operations of the county. There's, there's no ties or restrictions to that.
So someone can look at your unassigned fund balance, and that's basically like your cash on hand that you basically have to run your county.
So it, it's not the same as cash, but what it does basically represent is all of your assets less all your liabilities. So it's kind of what's left over after you take what you have and pay what you owe. That is what's left for you to use for county operations.
And I see I was at 37 million, 37 and a half. How many, how does that stack up across the state?
So that's why we like to look at it as a percentage and not in dollars, because obviously, you've got large entities that are going to have bigger dollars, but the percentage of expenditure still may not be as high. So I'll talk in terms of the 32% of budgeted expenditures, and that is very healthy. Obviously, your 25% represents about three months of operations, which is a good, a good target to have. That's a very healthy target in and of itself. So you're above that. That's a very healthy fund balance. I've got, I've got a couple of clients that have a higher percentage than that, but, but most of ours are, most of our clients are, have a lower percentage than that. So I, that's why I consider that a healthy fund balance.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
First of all, thank you for this information, and a great job to the, to the staff and the job they've done here. Quick question I have around the 1% on the pension. I know last year, they pushed that off, and it appears this year they have to. Based on the, what the ask was from the state, there was, there was a number of years that that was going to be required to be paid. So basically, there, we're, we're going to now push that off two years down the road, correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. Okay. So are we looking?
And I say that, Mr. Rod, because they've got a target employer percentage that they want to get to in terms of the percentage that an employer pays for every employee.
Right.
So they've got to, at some point, they've got to keep increasing those rates to get to that target percentage they have.
So are we looking, do you roughly know the, I mean, so we're two years, are we 2027 now, 2025, they've pushed it off?
I don't remember for sure, but it's, they pushed it off one year, so I think there's two or three years left on it. So depending on if they continue to delay it, we'll determine how far out we go.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions? Thank you for coming, and of course, we all in this council thank Kevin Madden and Erin Siegler for all the work that they do to ensure that we keep our finances on the straight and narrow, that we have healthy reserves, and that we do it in a transparent way where the taxpayers can be assured that, that we're looking out for them, number one. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you.
At this time, we have a public forum session. I don't have a forum, nobody signed up. Do we have a motion on consent agenda?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving consent agenda, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Public hearing. Counsel to hold a public hearing and provide third reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of an amendment to the existing fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes agreement to provide for changes to an existing fee in lieu of ad valorem tax incentive to a company now identified under the codename of Project Daily and Ford, the inclusion of certain property in York County, South Carolina, in the county's multi-county industrial park agreement with Chester County and other matters related thereto. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor? Please step forward and, and provide your name and address.
I'm Luke Holding. I live at 2737 Wentzweck Cove. I'm Director of Operations at Munzing and have been for the last four years. So I'm proud to say I work for Munzing. I grew up in this community in Clover, actually went to the Clover School System, and we've gotten this far through the help of Teresa Curtis, David Swinson, and Allison Harvey, who's put a lot of work and effort into this fee law agreement. It's going to bring around 18 to 20 jobs to the community, and also maybe around 30 million dollars to the Clover area, York County area as well. And we were fighting for it to come to my community, which is your guys' community as well, versus two other states, of course, in the United States as well. So we hope to begin project work later this year, and we look for your support. So thank you for that. Thank you for the consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone who wishes to speak against?
Move to close.
Second. Motion and a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have another motion?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. We do appreciate your investment in York County and look forward to, to all that you'll bring to us. Counsel to hold a public hearing and consider second reading of an ordinance to amend York County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 154 subdivision code, to remove development criteria for the reduction in lot sizes, to reduce the spacing of certain buffer tree plantings, to establish cluster subdivisions, which includes the following provisions: purpose, applicability, open space standards, perimeter buffer, and subdivision design to amend York County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 155 zoning code, to remove the required amenities and density bonuses for residential plan developments, to differentiate the required impervious ratio requirements between uses, to revise minimum lot sizes for residential uses, to establish lot sizes for cluster subdivision, to simplify the residential density table, to amend the open space section in its entirety, to remove the site amenities from the commercial design guidelines, to amend the tree protection section, to add a definition for tree save area, to clarify the process to remove a grand tree, to clarify which developments require a tree save area, to clarify when an aerial photograph may replace a physical tree survey, to provide for a public hearing, and to provide for other matters related thereto. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against?
Move to close.
Second. We have a motion and a second to close. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Do we have another motion?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve with one slight change, and that is that the green space percentage requirement in RUD and RUD 1 be applied only within the urban service boundaries.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Counsel to hold a public hearing and provide third reading of an ordinance to authorize the sale of a 60,630 square foot, 1.392 acres, more or less, portion of one undeveloped parcel located in Fort Mill in the proximity of the intersection of Sprat Street and Fort Mill Parkway, identified by tax map number 0202001057, to entertain an existing offer to purchase the parcel, to authorize the chairwoman to execute the contract of sale indeed, to provide for a public hearing, and to provide for other matters relating thereto. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against?
Move to close.
Second.
Motion and a second to close. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have another motion?
Move to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Any? Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Council to hold a public hearing and consider third reading of an ordinance to establish and create a special tax district to be known as Bethel Lake Wiley Land Acquisition and Preservation Parks District in York County, South Carolina, to be administered as an agency of the county, to define its areas and boundaries, to define the nature of the services to be rendered therein, to fix the maximum level of taxes which may be levied to provide for the operation and maintenance of Bethel Lake Wiley Land Acquisition and Preservation Parks District, and to provide for other matters relating thereto. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against? Do we have a motion to close?
Move to close.
Second.
Motion and a second to close, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Move to old business, rezoning action. Consider second reading, case number 20-11, tax map number 408000120.
Yeah.
What did I do?
About the four?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have a motion on the Bethel Lake Wiley?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Old business rezoning action. Consider second reading, case number 20-11, tax map number 408000120. Zoning request to rezone from AGC to RUD, four acres. Do we have a motion?
Move to deny.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I have a.
Mr. Rodd?
I want, I want, I think, is the applicant here? I think, I remember this discussion from the last time, and I just wanted to, to check to see had they met with any of the surrounding neighbors to see if they come to any kind of agreement, how they can get this worked out versus us just flat out denying it.
Staff, has there been any update? Was there any meeting? Did the owner meet with the neighbors? And are there any deed restrictions that were?
My understanding is there has not been a meeting or any deed restrictions proposed.
Any other discussion? Any other questions?
I'd just like to maybe explain why I'm making a motion to deny. And I just, I feel like there were a lot of people that came. I know, I don't feel like. There were a lot of people that came and spoke against this, and they had concerns. I remember being at that podium with the same type of concerns and, and not always being heard. I think it's very important that we listen to, to the people and the neighbors, the people who've been there for a long time that have concerns. It concerns me that, you know, Councilman Rodd was pretty specific in asking for a, a meeting of the people. That, that is the very least that somebody can do if you're, if you're wanting to, to make a change or do something, and, and you show up here and, you know, 25 other people show up and they're not in favor of what you want to do. You know, what you do on your property doesn't just affect you, it affects those other, those other folks. So the, the lack of a meeting is, is a big concern of mine. And I just, I think in this case, it kind of sets a precedent if we were to approve this. So that's, that was my reason for a no.
Yeah.
Ms. Rodd?
I want, I want to make one more comment.
No, we don't have public hearing.
I, I just want to make one more comment. And just to kind of refresh everybody's memory about what's kind of going on. The applicant has asked us to allow them to break up four acres into two lots. And if I understand it correctly, that area has deed restrictions that require five acres to build on. And so they're asking, am I correct with that analysis?
Yeah.
And they're asking to be able to put two houses basically on four acres where the deed restriction says you have to have five acres. And I asked the question about, you know, working with the neighbors, because this may change the complexity of the neighborhood. Obviously, you know, deed restrictions are put in place for a certain reason. And if neighbors can work it out, that's, that makes it easier on us to make the decision. If the neighbor, the community come up and say, hey, yeah, we agree with it, we don't have an issue with it. But when we get people in a po, as opposed to it as they were, you know, it kind of puts it on us to kind of look out for what the majority says in the area, because this is where people grow up, this is where people make a huge investment. And so we want to respect that. And if the community can't come up with an agreement, then we have to make sure that we kind of stick to what, what we have before us. I was willing to support it had the neighbors and the applicant came forward and said we were able to work some things out. We could have probably went along with it, but since that didn't happen, I, I don't think this, I don't think I'll be able to support it going forward. So I'll be supporting the, to deny it.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, you know, I think in this situation here, I think it, it comes down to precedence of it. You know, require, what was the minimum requirement? And I feel at this point, I again, agree with what you're saying.
Any other comments, discussion?
Well, this is my district, and I didn't vote for this the last time. And for the same reasons, I'm going to support this motion, because I think if we're going to, as a council, try to make sure we don't repeat sins of the past in other rural areas that have been done and, and areas that have grown too fast, we need to make sure that we stick to not allowing higher density in areas that don't support it. We don't have the funds to be able to support the road and, roads and infrastructure. And at the end of the day, if you purchase property knowing that you have one house existing on there, and that's all that's allowed under your current zoning, to, to request that you add two more to that, I think is, is sets a precedent that makes it very difficult to, to ensure that we meet the infrastructure needs of the county, especially when the area is outside the urban services boundary. So the motion is to deny. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. New business, the Slishers Office requests council to ratify a grant application and to accept an award of $7,145 from the Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Program Grant with no local match.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Council to approve intergovernmental agreement for exit 82 and exit 85 interchanges as both projects were recently awarded grant funding from the State Infrastructure Bank.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
I do, I do have one, one question or discussion. Is there, in regards to this, this, is there requirements from the state based on this? Will they be, will we be held on the fact if they don't complete the work on time, there will be a penalty?
You just asked the question. I was about to give our engineering department and legal some acknowledgement for doing a wonderful job on. The original contract we received over the county was exposed. Legal engineering did a wonderful job of working to make sure that contract got adjusted appropriately, where we are not exposed to any overages or time delays in the project. We're not going to risk for that. I'd also like to give Gary Simmons some credit. We did reach out to Gary as well to make sure he cleared the path for us on that discussion. But it was really a great catch by legal engineering, and those risks have been taken care of.
Very good, thank you very much.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Committee and other reports. Finance and Operations Committee. I understand Mr. Winkler was out of town today. Ms. Love will give the report.
Yes, today at 5:30. And we considered applications for Service. For Planning Commission, and we recommend Greg Simmons for the at-large member. York County Cultural and Heritage Commission. We recommend Lou Anne Kokalas for District 6 for first term. Keep York County Beautiful, John Edwards for District 3. York County Forever, Carrie Tilly for the ex officio spot there. Flint Hill Fire Tax Board, Chris Tulffson for second term. And we did not make an appointment, a recommendation for the Old English District Commission. We also had a finance, a finance update from Aaron Sigler and Kevin Madden.
Thank you. Council, Councilmember New, non-agenda comments.
I think I'm up.
Mr. Rodd?
I just wanted to share with, with council and staff and everyone who's maybe watching at home. I've been getting some calls here recently about litter pickup and the way I was, roads are starting to look inside the county, outside the county, just throughout York County. And so I wanted to kind of make a, a public plea to everyone, districts one through seven. If you're listening at home, if you see something going on in the community for things being littered, illegal dumping, we asking that you chip in and, and one, first, report it. And two, if there's something that you can do about it in your own community, take some ownership and, and pick up around some areas that you reside in and, and help the community out, because litter's not just one person's problem. It's, it's a problem for everybody. And I just want to make that public plea, and hopefully, we can inform the sheriff and, and some other agencies to kind of keep an eye on some areas that, that have been known to be dumped on, because it, it makes the entire county look bad, even if it's not in, in one specific district. But we're just trying to look out and make sure we protect the home front from, from litter and things like that that's going on. So that's kind of my, my comment for tonight.
Mr. Rodd? Anyone else?
Yeah.
I just want to echo what you just said, Councilman Rodd. That most of my phone calls have been about litter as well. I don't know if it's because people are scared to pick up trash right now or if it's blowing out, but it has become a big issue. So it would definitely be helpful for everyone to pitch in. Let's keep York County beautiful.
Right.
I just, I just want to say that now that the room is emptied, you know, sometimes when we, we're sitting up here and we're passing things, considering things, passing things, denying things, a lot of times, you know, we, we have a public hearing, and we say, is there anybody that wants to speak in favor? Is there anybody that wants to speak against? And, and I looked out tonight, and there's, there's a roomful of people, and it just, it lets me know on some of the, the two of the things that we, one thing that we passed third reading on tonight, and one thing that's at first reading, specific to, to District 2, Lake Wiley area, is that, you know, the, the people just aren't aware sometimes of the good things that we're doing. And, and I would say that in the last six months, this council and county staff, Diane, I know she has to put up with me. And, and we don't always like each other, but we, we, you know, we agree to disagree on things. But, but county, the Planning and Zoning Department has done a heck of a job on these two things that one, that are both before us now. One that will, has passed tonight, and one that we'll still have two more readings on. And, and I just want to say that sometimes people just don't know whether to speak for or against something. But I appreciate the, the support in getting the, the Green Space Initiative. I know everybody was in favor of that. That's a, that is a really big deal. I, I live every day, and Tom lives every day in an area where we wish we could go back and pass that a long time ago. And for, for those who are in the more rural areas and haven't experienced what we've experienced, you will see, you will benefit from what we've done tonight. You know, we're not going to get 10 years down the road and say, gosh, I wish we had done something to save those trees and, and to do, do the right thing. We, as a council, and county management, and planning and zoning, we have done that tonight. So kudos to us, congratulations to the residents of, of, of York County, because we, we really have checked a big box tonight, in my opinion.
Thank you, Ms. Love.
Excellent, that's, that's great. The one thing I do want to mention, and one of, some of the phone calls I've been getting lately have been around COVID vaccinations and, and getting information out in regards to that. You know, as we get information, obviously, we're all disseminating information out. But I think that's, you know, forefront of, of, you know, the, in the minds of people from within our counties. So again, just to share that with everyone here, yeah.
I do want to say, with respect to the litter issue for the, I just learned today that you, Keep York County Beautiful is actually sponsoring for the next month and a half, for a month. If you get a couple of your neighbors together and go clean up, you get free t-shirts. So make sure you spread the word. It's kind of a fun thing. Some of these clubs can get out here and do that, and it, it encourages all of us to do our part. I think that's a great initiative. And, and to piggyback on your comment with the vaccinations, I'm very proud of our county and the work that we are doing to help with that. We didn't create this problem. We weren't the ones who, who were responsible for disseminating the vaccine. But I, I do want council to be aware of, to the extent that you've not. I went to a meeting last week with Piedmont on the county's behalf, and we are moving forward, and we are going to be an integral part of providing volunteer help to get out a new vaccine clinic. And we all should be proud of, of what our staff does in that respect. And I think we need to be, we need to make sure that that information gets out, because I agree with Ms. Love. A lot of times, we don't do as good a job of getting out, you know, the good word. And, and I think we're doing a much better job. I'm seeing it on Facebook at least. But with that said, do we have any citizen concerns? Do we have a motion for executive session?
We do. Move to go into executive session regarding the receipt of legal advice regarding the contractual matter of the Blue Granite franchise and also receipt of legal advice for another contractual matter, the Rock Hill Tiff District and the Third Amendment to the county and Rock Hill intergovernmental agreement.
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We will go into executive session. Again, is there any motions?
Move to make a minor amendment to the York County and Rock Hill intergovernmental agreement to change parking revenue language as well as the projects as discussed in executive session.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes five to one. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.